Thank you, everyone. It is four o'clock and we have a lot of things to get through today. Welcome. This is the February 20th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I'm Scott Alupka, Chair of the Board. We will now start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the Board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Mr. Bratty? Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer is not here. Mr. Heckman is out. Mr. Heinle is not here. Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Tennant?
Aye.
Thank you. Will you now please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin our meeting, I would like to take a moment to introduce our newest Board member, Mr. Christopher Brody Tennant. Mr. Tennant, would you like to say a few words about yourself? There you go.
There we go. Yes, I am a Baltimore County resident from Catonsville, Maryland. I'm in the restaurant industry and also the realtor in the area and look forward to helping make a difference in the community.
There we go. Just to note before we move on, there will be several pieces to the meeting tonight. In addition to the regular Board meeting, we will be doing a CIP meeting and then we will be also having the public forum for the Jacksonville Plan. We'll be moving back and forth depending upon the timing of how things go. So, thank you for your patience as we get through all this. Again, just a reminder as we saw here, please be sure you are unmuting your mics before speaking, both for the people in the audience and for the recordings. Ms. Patrick, are there any changes to the tentative agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
In the February 13th email, you received draft minutes from the February 6th meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review the draft minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the February 6th meeting minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. This evening, we have the opportunity to discuss and vote on the 2025 Basic Services Map. This item was introduced to the Board on the January 16th, 2025, and a public hearing was conducted on February 6th. Staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here to answer any questions that the Board may have as we discuss and before we vote. Would staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation like to add anything further tonight? Okay. Do Board members have any outstanding questions?
It's just transportation or... Okay.
It was the Basic Services Map, so yeah, that was the water sewer and...
I have a question.
Sure.
Where in terms of priority is the Richland wastewater treatment plant?
The project was recently advertised. It was pulled back because of an issue with coordination on the second project, but the plan is to re-advertise this summer. So, it's top priority. But it will take us probably a total of three years to build the new pumping station and decommission the wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. Duval, you have a question? Any... Mr. Hinton?
Just wanted to confirm, this was a part of the $400 million request or no?
The $400 million?
Yeah.
Or...
No, I think...
I'm thinking...
No, this is... These are projects in works as opposed to the capital.
Not CIP.
I got you. Okay. Sorry. Love it.
Yeah, this has been funded. So, this was funded in CIP from two or three years ago.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All right. If there are no further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board recommends the adoption by the County Council of the 2025 Basic Services Maps for public water, public sewage, and transportation per the memorandum as submitted by the Director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation at the January 16th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I will do a roll call vote. When I call your name, please say a or nigh. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Mr. Bratty?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Muneses?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Tennant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. We will now get a report from the February 13th, 2025, meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
At the February 13th, 2025, meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, the LPC voted to issue four certificates of appropriateness to the following properties: The Reed Property in Halethorpe, the Baldanza Property in Lutherville, the Woman's Club of Glendon Property in Glendon, and the Zerbo's Property in Glenarm.
And update on recent council legislation of interest to the Board.
Yeah, we do have a few of those. 106... Bill 10624 zoning regulations uses permitted in the business local BL zone, special regulations for commercial community core districts for the purpose of permitting a combination of apartments and housing for the elderly in the BLCCC district if located within a geographic area, providing for an automatic sunset provision for this act and generally relating to apartments, elderly housing facilities, and the BLCCC district. Bill 125 zoning regulations uses permitted in the business maritime marina zone, marina storage shipping containers for the purpose of permitting the use of shipping containers in a certain area for marina-related storage in the BMM zone, provided the total number of shipping containers does not exceed a certain number of containers per acre of contiguous marina land and generally relating to shipping containers, marina-related storage, and uses permitted in the BMM zone. Bill 225 zoning regulations farm markets accessory carryout restaurant for the purpose of permitting a carryout restaurant as an accessory used to a farm market in each district, establishing certain locations citing and gross floor area restrictions for accessory carryout restaurants requiring an accessory carryout restaurant to maintain the same hours of operation as the principal farm market and generally relating to farm markets, carryout restaurants, accessory uses, and uses permitted in each district. Resolution 625 approval of applications, sale of development rights easements, agricultural land preservation fund, a resolution to approve certain applications for the sale of agricultural easements on agricultural properties that meet the county criteria for application in accordance with Article 24, Title III of the Baltimore County Code. Resolution 725 amending the boundary of the Essex Revitalization District, a resolution for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Essex Commercial Revitalization District, the County Council deems it appropriate at this time to amend the boundary to include the area known as East Point Mall. Resolution 825 amend the goal three, Action 12 of the Livable Built Environment Section, Vision Framework of the Master Plan 2030, a resolution to amend Goal Three, Action 12 of the Livable Built Environment Section of the Vision Framework of the Baltimore County Master Plan 2030. And that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. This now concludes the first part of our agenda tonight. As I said, we will now begin our CIP meeting to hear staff recommendations. I will turn this over to Ms. Brophy, the CIP Subcommittee Chair. As I said earlier, we will have until five o'clock, so we'll break a little before that if we need to then get ready for the public hearing. Ms. Brophy?
Thank you, Mr. Alupka. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Alupka said, my name is Emily Brophy and I am the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget Program. I would like to acknowledge the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Mr. Bratty? Mr. Duval? Mr. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer is not here. Mr. Heckman, Mr. Heinle, Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Alupka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Ms. Panero is not here. Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Tennant?
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear staff recommendations from the Department of Planning. After their presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions and then the Subcommittee will vote. Before we begin presentations, I want to note that I know there are members of the community in attendance at the meeting tonight. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 17th, 2024, which was the opportunity for the Board to hear from the citizens on their issues concerning the Capital Improvement Program. I would like to invite staff from the Department of Planning to begin their presentation.
Good evening, Capital Improvement Program Subcommittee Chairwoman and members of the Board. Tonight, planning staff will review the capital budget for fiscal year '26 and the capital program for fiscal year '27 through '31. Staff has reviewed the budgets as prepared by the agencies. The Director of the Budget Office sets the target limits for each agency and their capital projects. The agencies then prepare a budget for the upcoming fiscal year and the following five years that fall within the limits set by the Budget Office. We have found that the funding amounts have not increased nor decreased, nor have the funding sources changed from the adopted fiscal year '25 budget. Staff would now like to review the budget in which citizen input meeting requests were made in order to summarize the agency responses to that request. Chris Weaver will begin by reviewing the storm drains section.
Hello. There were several issues raised regarding storm drains through the CIM. One of them was Brighton community curb and gutters, which would actually be covered under streets and highways, though I just wanted to mention it since it was listed up there. There was a request for Gwin Oak storm drain improvements amongst some other improvements for the Gwin Oak neighborhood or that specific neighborhood, and I did not get a response from storm drainage for that. Another issue raised was the sinking sidewalk and collapsing road pavement along Oella Avenue near the 1102 property. This has been brought up several years now, and about three years ago, a DPWT crew inspected the area and found that the area was stable, at least in their opinion. In indirectly addressing this, also, a green infrastructure, Oella flooding study is budgeted in FY '25, '26. Another issue brought up was a request for a plan for stormwater management to deal with the flooding along Ruxton and Circle Roads, which is part of the roll and run. And there is funding for a Jones Falls watershed flooding study budgeted for FY 2026. And that was the last of the storm drains comments. Follow up here, I'm also going to address the two school comments that were brought up. For the increased capacity for the Lutherville area elementary schools, schools are... There are capacity and planning studies for the elementary school cluster dependent on available funding. In regards to improvements for the Fullerton Elementary School, various facility improvements have been funded as part of the FY 2025 State CIP, and a secure vestibule is being funded as a separate project using SSGP funds. And those are the last of the school comments. And I'll hand it over to Miles.
Good afternoon, Planning Board. So, let's jump right into streets and highways and transportations. For the Bolis Quarters Improvement Association request, Department of Public Works and Transportation has responded that the two sidewalk requests in this area have completed evaluations and one is eligible to move forward under 205P301. As for traffic safety initiatives and studies, improvements are outside of the purview of this CIP budget. For the Brighton Community Association, all streets are evaluated, graded, and given a PCI score, and if qualified and funding is available, they are checked for conflicts and projects through other agencies. If they have concrete curbing, this work has to be completed as well before any paving would take place. And this is a general response that will come up again, so I'll just mention that as funding exists for qualified repairs or does not as for future responses. There's also an application for Brighton Community Association that needs to be submitted to initiate a study to qualify for traffic calming devices. And the Brighton area is not known to DPWT to have any systemic drainage issues, and an installation of curb and gutter could negatively impact drainage that occurs in the current open space section roadway. For Gwin Oak improvements, there is funding that exists for qualified repair requests as well as improvements for streetlights are outside of the purview of the CIP budget. Halethorpe Improvement Association, the seven sidewalk requests for Potomac Avenue are not eligible under the connectivity program guidelines. Lutherville Community Association, the two requests along York Road will both be eligible for the connectivity program but require coordination with the State Highway Administration. There is also a sidewalk request on East Timonium Road that was previously completed. For Oella HOA, seven sidewalk requests for Oella Ave are currently not eligible. Overly Fullton, a sidewalk request for Henry Ave, Leslie Ave to Lindale Ave is not eligible, and it could be eligible if certain criteria is met, specifically right-of-way donation in the future. And an application needs to be submitted to initiate a study for quality of traffic calming devices. Owens Mills Radcliffe Reserve, DPWT will continue to partner with State Highway Administration on improvements to pedestrian facilities along Reisterstown Road. And the Pikesville Revitalization Action Plan, improvements to Stevenson Road pedestrian facilities is funded and preparing to start consultant design. Pikesville Avalon Courtyard Combs Community and Garden, Green Tree Drive, sorry, requests repaving in Powhatan Park neighborhood streets, Keelox Road, Robin Hill Road, Rutlaw Road, Norvo Road, Redmond Road, Tulsa Road, Pembroke Ave, Green Tree Road from Hooks Lane to Craddock Lane are being investigated for the above-mentioned roads and consulting with BGE. Stormwater management is to confirm/verify any other projects. The Pikesville Communities Corporation, DPWT will also partner with the State Highway Administration for any improvements along Reisterstown Road. And all current sidewalk requests for Seven Mile Lane, Slade Avenue, and Sudbrook Lane are not eligible under the current program guidelines but could be eligible in the future similarly with right-of-way donations. Pikesville Dumbarton Stevenson Civic Improvement Association, improvements to Stevenson Road pedestrian facilities is funded and preparing to start consultant design. Pikesville Pine Ridge Association, all current sidewalk requests received for Seven Mile Lane and Sudbrook again are not currently eligible. The Gwen Falls Greenway Trail Network, while recommended in the bike and ped master plan, is outside of the purview of the current CIP budget. Pikesville Township Association, there is currently plans for Sudbrook Lane sidewalk improvements. For the Pikesville Willow Glen North Community Council, there, all streets are evaluated, graded, and given a PCI score. If there is funding available, they will be given. For the 700 block of Con Drive in Pikesville, again, all streets are evaluated, given a PCI score. Funding will be available if it is available. And for Ryderwood, Lake Roland, sidewalk in the vicinity of Charles Street and Stevenson Lane has been evaluated under the sidewalk connectivity program and was determined to not be a good candidate. The project will be evaluated for separate funding during the county budget process. For Shellburn Road, sidewalk requests received for Sulfur Spring and Shellburn are not eligible under current connectivity guidelines. And the Transportation Bureau has implemented safety features at Sulfur Spring, Shellburn Road such as stop signs, pavement markings, and rumble strips. Additional safety improvements are outside the current CIP budget. For Timonium and the Meadows of Greenspring, HOA, again, all streets are evaluated and given a PCI score. Towson Stonely, again, streets evaluated, given a PCI score as well. And for Villanova Community Association, this request was reviewed by staff and work orders were submitted to BGE for an upgrade at an intersection, installation of two lights, and an adjustment at another intersection as requested. Additional requests are currently outside of the purview of the CIP budget.
So, and I'm sorry, Ms. Meacham, if I may, just because there was a lot of information just from the first two speakers, is there any way we could just pause and see if there was any questions on those sections first before we keep going? Because I know, I think you had a question, Mr. Johnson. Do you want to go ahead and ask? I think this is for Mr. Weaver.
Yes. For the Gwin Oak storm drains, you said there were some issues. What kind of things are going on with...
I believe it was just mentioned as one of a lot of issues in the area. I think specific comment from the CIM was that the storm drains were blocked with trash and such. So, I don't know any more beyond that.
So, has anybody been out to investigate or...
Not that I know of, no.
So, we're not going to do anything with them until somebody goes out or the next round or...
I would think somebody from DPWT would have to go out and investigate first, yeah.
And then, my second question was about the sidewalk requests that you were talking about. I notice a lot of them aren't being approved. Do they not have the information before they submit their information to you all?
Is that in regards to the connectivity program? Yeah, I have only received these responses from DPWT. I believe that they evaluate on a large scale, but they may need to submit a full request for that. But I'll contact DPWT and get your response for that.
Mr. Alupka?
Just a follow-up, but also sounded like in some cases there were right-of-way issues. Would that also impact whether something was eligible?
It seems like, yeah, some of those right-of-ways would need to be donated first before the county could take action.
So, as a follow-up to that, what is the county's procedure to try to get donations of right-of-ways?
I'd have to follow up with DPWT to get that answer for you.
Okay. And then, I had one other question. When you mentioned the PCI score on quite a few of those responses, so is that, and I want to say you guys said it is, but I just want to confirm, the PCI score is available for the public to see?
Yes, I think Jen will answer that question.
Thank you.
Yes, they have the GIS layer, so you can go into My Neighborhood and then you can add their pavement conditions layer.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions from the Board before we continue? Go ahead.
So, when you all make your recommendations, you kind of depend upon what DPW tells you or you do your own investigations as well?
We rely on DPW, yes.
Ms. Brophy, if I may, as to your comment about the PCI score, I believe it was stated in the Public Works presentation that, for instance, if you're looking at Joppa Road, it's broken up into sections and that part of the challenge of resident is to narrow in on the particular section of roadway in order to then identify whether or not this section is failing and therefore have a higher PCI score as opposed to this section, which could be a block or two away. Although, as Ms. Meacham said, it is available in the public, but I think, I won't say people are admonished, but sort of warned that it may not be as easy to determine using the My Neighborhood layer.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Lafferty. Oh, yep, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Lafferty, is that consistent with all of our... We have a lot of roads that are continuous, Hartford Road, all those places. So, most of our roads like that, they would be the same scenario probably?
Yes. Now, something like Hartford Road is a state road. So, this only applies to the county roads. A lot of them, of course, are within neighborhoods, and therefore you can segment off the 900 block, for instance, and look at what the score would be for that area.
Any other questions from the Board before we continue? Thank you, Ms. Meacham.
Madam Chair, if I may, one more thing for Ms. Meacham speaks.
Yes.
Is that the CIM letter that was sent to the County Ministerial Office or the County Executive after the public hearing in October was also copied to the Board members. So, the Board members should, new ones perhaps don't have that, we can make sure they do have it. But it is a list of all the CIM comments that are being reflected in what our staff now is reviewing.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Lafferty. Sorry, third time, Ms. Meacham.
We're having mic problems.
It died.
Okay.
We'll be right back.
No worries. That was our fault.
So, at the citizen input meeting for the request for Recan Parks, there was a cleanup waterways at the Gwin Oaks Park request, and Recan Parks said that this would be a cooperative effort with EPS and Recan Parks, and they will look into investigating the state of the waters that flow through the park. There was a request to provide more funding to Neighbor Space. Neighbor Space is by code entitled to 20% of the local open space fee in LEU program, which can fluctuate from year to year. That's based on like development fees. So, there is a request for more open space and park areas in the Owens Mills and Reisterstown area, and the Owens Mills park site should be developed. So, there are two park sites that have been acquired in this area since the start of calendar year 2019. And Recan Parks will evaluate acquisition opportunities that may arise in the future. There is presently no funding available for the design and development of the Owens Mills Park site. For the green open space in Colonial Village area Pikesville request, that would be a cooperative effort with DPWT. And there were a number of parks along the Gwin's Falls. Environmental regulations associated with this forest and streams and wetlands can pose a challenge to creating trails. So, trail networks that involve both park trails and sidewalks are typically dependent upon the availability of grant funding, and Recan Parks will consult with DPWT to inquire about where any Gwin's Falls trails fall in the priority list within the county bicycle and pedestrian master plan. For the child-friendly equipment request that is near a tree park in Sudbrook multi-use areas, Recan Parks will investigate this request and evaluate how it may relate to the agency's playground replacement program. And there was a request for a trail to connect Old Court Metro to Greenwood Road, followed by the Gwin's Falls, as well as an acquisition of a property on Church Lane. Recan Parks will consult with DPWT to inquire about where any Gwin's Falls trails fall in the priority list within the county's bike and pedestrian master plan. And the property on Church Lane is likely one that both the county and Neighbor Space have investigated and rejected as an acquisition candidate as it is heavily impacted from environmental standpoint. And then, there was a request to develop the Woodley Avenue park site in Reisterstown. Funding allowing Recan Parks would be supportive of proceeding with the design and development of this 3.8 acre park site. There was a request for renovating and enhancing the Southwest Area Park, including a boat ramp and a kayak launch in conjunction with the Guinness to Southwest Area Park Trail. This could potentially be fully or partially funded through the Recan Parks Local Park Comprehensive Enhancement Program. And Recan Parks will evaluate candidates for program funding among the county's main community and neighborhood parks. Additionally, the boat facilities at the park were... Additionally, the boat facilities at the park were rated the sixth most facility in need of repair within a recent conducted, um, survey. And the boating facilities could be a candidate for a, a boating waterway grant request within the next several years. There was also a request for park updates in Lutherville, and Recan Parks has completed playground replacements at Valley Fields Park North and Orchard Hills Park. And there's a playground replacement underway at Seminary Park. And the court renovations have been completed at Seminary Park and Lutherville Elementary and Carriage Hills Park. The citizen input meeting requests that involve the Community Improvement Fund were for, there was a request for the Glenn L. Martin Maryland Aviation Museum of 600K. And this is currently, um, there is currently no new money in planning's budget for this project, but prior funds have, um, been given and those have not been completely, um, drawn down. The EpiCenter in Parkville is requesting 750,000 to, um, create a dedicated space within the facility. Um, and there are currently no specific funds are identified in the, in this budget for the EpiCenter. The Pikesville Armory Foundation is requesting funding for the design and development and engineering and the construction of the parking garage and the repurposing of the historic garage, the main armory building and the Edwards Building. Um, and there's currently no funding from, for that in this budget, but the, um, County Executive did commit 3.5 million over three years in the Recan Parks budget to develop, um, fields behind the armory building. And then, let's see, Pikesville is, uh, requesting funding for the implementation of the crack, crack plan and the beautification of the Central Business District. And there are no funds in this budget for that request. The final, um, group that we have to review is the waterway improvements. And there was a request by Lutherville for funding for an environmental survey of the Upper Rollin Run. The, um, Environmental Protection said that they already conducted many assessments and restorations in the Rollin Run watershed. And there really is no need to set up a funding for a study. This group can contact EPS to do an investigation without the need for capital funds. And that, um, that concludes our staff recommendations for the, um, for the agency, for the agencies that had, um, citizen input meeting reviews. And we, um, staff recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed.
Ms. Meacham, um, does any planning board member have any questions on the ones that were presented on or any of the other classes for further discussion? Yes, Ms. Muneses?
Um, what was the request for funding from, um, Glenn L. Martin Museum? What, what did they want?
Um, that was... 600K, um, in, that was, yeah, for unrestricted operational funding for the startup cost of the Glenn L. Martin Maryland Aviation Museum.
Ms. Muneses, uh, for your information, uh, the previous two budgets that the county exec, former county executive has put money in for the Glenn L. Martin Museum, uh, my understand, and there is actually a pending request from them. However, they've not determined the exact location and they don't have a lease arrangement already established that would allow us to grant money to them, although money is in the current, in the past two years' budget for the museum itself.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program agrees, agrees with the staff recommendation to accept the proposed budget for the Stage One Proposed Fiscal Year 26 Budget and FY 26 to FY 31 Program. If extra funds become available, the CIP Committee would like to request funding be provided for the following projects, which we have not said, so.
So, no, no other projects. Okay. Um, do I have a second? Thank you. Um, now that we have a motion and a second, we are going to do a roll call. When I call your name, please say aye or nay.
Before we-
Go ahead.
So the, the budget letter that we typically do, is that separate from this or will that be approved once this motion is approved?
The, the letter is not yet drafted, which depended upon the subcommittee's actions today, but that'll be available for the full board when the full board votes. And will reflect no additional recommended projects. That's not to say that the full board meeting can't come up, but basically it's premised on what happens today. So that transmittal letter will indicate, um, support for the budget as submitted.
So I, I, I guess I'll bring this up now then, right before we, what I would like to propose in the transmittal letter, I agree that we should accept everything as, as proposed and as proposed by the staff. I was struck, however, in the presentations this year that we had, you know, DPWT said that they need 400 million to repair the roads and they only get 11 million. Ms. Schindel from Property Management said that there were, we're 20 years behind on maintenance. Uh, the library was pointing out that, you know, 12 of their 19 facilities are like 50 years old. There's a lot of deferred maintenance. And I would like us to at least point out to the county exec and the, and the county council that as we are, as we are moving forward, um, that we acknowledge that all these deferred capital needs need to be taken into account in future capital obligations. I've drafted something that I can send around for people for the next time, but as opposed to the past where we've said, you know, if there's extra money, do A, B, and C, there's not a lot of extra money. I mean, it sounds like everything is pretty much maxed out, uh, but I think there are these ongoing needs and at the same time, we have new projects coming on board. So I will submit, I will send this out to everyone before the next meeting and I guess we can talk about it at that time.
Okay. But, so then, Mr. Lafferty, um, Director Lafferty, should I still take the vote? Because if it's going to change this middle letter, we probably have to have a discussion on that.
Well, I guess what I would, I would recommend instead is if there's agreement that deferred maintenance should be addressed in a transmittal letter, then the board could accept that tonight, and then Mr. Hulka could circulate to specific language that we could then incorporate, uh, and then the board could vote on that version or amended version at the next meeting. So if there's, mm, concurrence that deferred maintenance should be addressed in a transmittal letter, I think it'd be appropriate to, for the board to go on record tonight with a vote. So you could approve the budget with additional language in the transmittal letter addressing deferred maintenance.
Okay. Any discussion from the board on that in reference to Mr. Hulka's suggestion? I mean, unless anybody is against it, I mean, should we go ahead and actually make a motion to go ahead and accept that in the transmittal letter so that we can at least get it on the record?
Yes.
Okay. Be well, like a, okay, well, do you want to at least-
I will.
Can you at least read to us your suggested language?
Sure, so the suggested language I have-
I'll always pre- it up later.
Yeah, yeah. The language I have is that the planning board's recommended capital budget and program reflect the agency's priorities. At the same time, the planning board heard from a number of departments regarding significant backlog in capital projects such as road repairs and maintenance or replacement of county buildings, including schools, libraries, and community college campuses. The planning board suggests that these deferred capital needs be taken into account in future capital allocations, including, including allocating more capital dollars to reinvesting in the county's older communities before building new facilities elsewhere.
Any-
So I guess my motion would be to, um, let me reread the, the, the motion.
Go ahead.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program agrees with the staff recommendation to accept the proposed budget for the Stage One Proposed Fiscal Year 26 Budget and FY 26 FY 31 Program. At the same time, uh, the committee would like to request that the transmittal letter include the proposed language about deferred maintenance to underscore our concerns about these issues moving forward.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Can I do it all in favor or would you like me to take a roll call, Director Lafferty?
You could do it without a roll call manager.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So, let's see, oh, I was supposed to go through the roll call for the letter, so I'm going to go ahead and go through the roll call for the letter, since we've gone ahead and changed the letter a little bit. Okay. So when I call your name, please say aye or nay to the motion that Mr. Hulka stated with the added amendment. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Mr. Braddy?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hulka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Tennant?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries. That is the conclusion of our votes. This concludes the work session of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. The final vote on the capital improvement program is scheduled for our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting on March 6th, 2025. The meeting will be virtual. Information for the upcoming meeting can be found on the planning board's webpage. Thank you for attending tonight. This meeting is hereby adjourned.
Good evening again, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing on the Jacksonville Community Plan. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Scott Hulka, Chair of the Planning Board. We will start with a roll call to account for members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Mr. Braddy?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Tennant? Thank you. The Jacksonville Community Plan was introduced to the board at the February 6th, 2025 board meeting with a presentation by Ms. Abigail Rogers from the Department of Planning. Tonight, Ms. Rogers is here to further present the plan to the board. Following the presentation, board members will have a chance to ask questions and then members of the public will have the opportunity to speak on the matter. Uh, now, please join me in welcoming Ms. Rogers.
Hello? Okay. Well, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening to the board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. As a refresher, I'm Abigail Rogers with the Department of Planning. I'm a community planner. And this is the full presentation where we'll go a little more into the plan and just kind of a general summary. So this is to be included as an amendment in Master Plan 2030. This comes from a December 2023 resolution, which allowed Jacksonville to update their plan. The impetus for the update was, uh, that the data's old, most of it was from the 1990s, because we are updating the 2000 Jacksonville plan. Traffic and population data has changed. Sweet Air Park is new, uh, there's upcoming new senior center, and also some terminology in the master plan has changed. For example, we don't use the term, um, rural commercial center anymore, we use the term village. So the... Hello? Oh. So the GJA Board led the process, and three of them are here today. Oh, Greater Jacksonville Association, that's the community group, um, in Jacksonville. Where was I? So the main community outreach for this was a town hall meeting in January of 2024 that was advertised in the local papers and, uh, received a pretty large turnout. And the plan was put on the Greater Jacksonville website, and people had a, um, amount of time that they could like write in their responses. So our department, Planning, reviewed it, um, but also it was reviewed by PAI, zoning, DPWT, DEPS, Recan Parks, and Aging. It was also reviewed by State Highway Administration and also the Carroll Recreation Council. And you can kind of see the flow there between, um, the discussion of the potential updates uh, to the draft review. So there's not been a substantial change in vision. As I mentioned, there's the terminology changes, uh, rural commercial center being villages, and the main thing we're getting into in the next slide is the village boundary change. So the village is the commercial core of Jacksonville. Uh, Jacksonville is seeking to implement a process, uh, where an applicant for a new business or a new building in the village boundary would sign an acknowledgement that they have read and understand the Jacksonville Community Plan. This would work as a place type amendment. So you can see over there in the lower left corner, uh, we're looking to include a new property within the boundary. This is 14202 Jarrettsville Pike. It's going to be included in the boundary because it was rezoned during the CZMP 2024. It went from being RC5 and a little bit of ROA to BLCR, and it makes sense to include it in the village boundary. So the main issues discussed in the plan is land use, zoning, also environmental issues, and probably the bulk of it is street scape, which we've all broken into, um, a few different categories, and then also community services and traffic issues. So the main land use issue is preservation. This is a village, but it's still a rural community. And the point of the village designation is to allow limited commercial activity to serve the rural community. Uh, Jacksonville Community Association is considering, uh, proposing a zoning overlay to reduce unwanted uses, uh, and also water quality is a concern. And the main goal is to have an attractive, uh, village center, uh, without vacancies, but one that is not super built up, and to have, uh, buildings follow the design guidelines in the plan. So a big, the main probably environmental issue is groundwater protection. This has been a significant issue in the past, there's been incidents. The G, Greater Jacksonville asks to have, um, projects minimize impervious surfaces, mitigate contamination, and also to inform the community and educate the community on water quality issues and water use issues. To get into street scape, uh, not all the guidelines could fit in the slide, but the main idea is that buildings should fit the current built environment in character of Jacksonville. They do not want tall buildings, things should be to the human scale, the rural scale. And, um, building materials should fit the rural village aesthetics and should be made of natural environmentally friendly materials. So there are two indexes in the plan to outline plant species that are encouraged and discouraged from the plan. Invasive species include bamboo, bayberry, ivy, a few others. Uh, one of the aesthetic goals too is to bury existing utility lines, uh, and avoidance of light pollution, uh, particularly floodlights, uh, further than they're needed for like recreation and safety. So signage is a major street scape issue because we're talking about the commercial core area of the village. So the hope is to have businesses follow the signage guidelines in Section 5.7 of the Jacksonville Community Plan. And signs should meet the needs of the business community, but in a way that is homogenous and aesthetically pleasing. Uh, visual clutter is a big issue in the area, according to the community. And also a goal is to have Welcome to Jacksonville signs, because this gives Jacksonville a sense of place, which our department is also big on. So community services mostly concerns parks, recreation, and the volunteer fire department. The aim of this part of the plan is to expand community involvement. These amenities always need volunteers, and to keep quality up, you always need the voice of the community. Uh, it's notable that the new senior centers planned for Jacksonville. I don't believe construction has started yet, though. And another hope is to replace the aging emergency response equipment and expand the resources available to the volunteer fire department. So finally, traffic circulation, uh, this is probably- So finally, traffic circulation, this is probably the thing that's changed the most since two thousand. You go to any rural part of the county and people are concerned about the increased flow of traffic and the safety issues around that. So some objectives for this include a right turn lane at the Four Corners intersection, which for non-locals is Sweet Air, Jarrettsville Pike, and Paper Mill Road. Also widening of Blenheim Avenue. Overshot Run is a creek, so it's that section of Blenheim Avenue. And also the realignment of Stansbury Mill Road. And also you'll see in the tables that traffic volume has increased quite a bit since two thousand and that's probably the main thing that has changed. So I'll open the floor for questions. And also David Palmer from Greater Jacksonville is here to answer some of them if that's needed.
Thank you. Does any of the board members have any questions?
I have a question. There's a vacant building on the shopping center lot. Is there a plan for that building?
Which building is that?
The vacant building on, on the shopping center lot. It's like an old restaurant.
Do you know what street that is on?
You're talking about the restaurant that was, that is in Manor Shopping Center?
Yes.
I'm sorry. David Palmer, thank you. David Palmer, I'm president of Greater Jacksonville Association. That is, that property is up for rent or lease. And according to the best of my knowledge, to the owner of the corporation that owns that Manor Shopping Center, they have not been able to secure a tenant at this time. The same thing with the old McDonald's building. There's actually two. That's a separate in-place building and that also has not been leased out to the best of my knowledge, although the management company is trying to do that. And, and the neighborhood would like to have those leased out too.
Ms. Profi.
So, and I apologize, I missed the last meeting when you presented first. So how does a community plan like this get incorporated into Master Plan twenty thirty? Since that was kind of a larger discussion in planning.
Tell me about Ms. Rogers, who's more familiar with the county procedures to that.
Thank you.
So it's included as an amendment?
So it'll, it'll go like live on the kind of website?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it would be an amendment to it? And then would the whole plan actually be attached as an amendment, like a link?
I believe it would.
It, it has to be presented to and voted on the county count, by the county council. And once it's voted on by the county council, it becomes an amendment to the plan. And so then it's referenced in the plan documents.
Okay.
We don't physically redo the master plan and attach the documents of reference.
Okay.
And that'll be, that'll be shown online at our website as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then one other question was, so, so there's already zoning and then you're, you're requesting an overlay on top of the existing zoning?
So that was just brought up as a possibility or are you asking about the village boundary?
No, when you were talking about the zoning, you said there was going to be like an additional overlay to kind of like.
That was just an idea that was.
It's not, it's not, the BLS, the CR, the BLS property, there's of course an overlay. The board has not. Does not specifically entertain that issue completely as any other properties.
Okay.
The board has the least amount of business, least amount of properties within the Greater Jacksonville area.
Okay.
I'd just like to introduce Mitch.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple of questions. When you presented the map, it looked like the, the area of the Greater Jacksonville was larger than just the village.
Yes.
The, the sort of the dark yellow is the area, is the area covered by the Greater Jacksonville plan?
The orange, yeah, the dark yellow. Actually, I don't think the border.
Then the orange is the, the village center that.
Yeah.
Is focused on.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the focus and that has the boundary and that would be the area where if a new business comes in or a new building is being built, that they have to acknowledge that they've read the Jacksonville plan. But yes, you're right, the yellow area, that is the Jacksonville area, but it's not, doesn't have that specific obligation on it.
The yellow is just part of the Greater Jacksonville area.
The yellow is just part of the Greater Jacksonville area. It actually extends out south down to the reservoir and west out to the, right to the reservoir itself. It goes north, then you have farms, east there are homes and farms. It's a rural residential area. Most of it is surrounded by farms and that's the way the residents like to keep it that way.
So I guess my question is, did the plan include all of that area or was it just focused? It sounds like it was mainly focused on the, the dark orange for the, the village center.
That's correct. There's some mention beyond that, but the plan primarily goes to the commercial village area. And you can see the property of fourteen two oh two, both by the owner and the board. We've requested now that it is a commercial to be added to the lines.
Go to the first slide that has, that's sort of zoomed out. So that is the Jacksonville area. That is what the plan covers. Oh, the plan focuses on the smaller area at the crossroads because that's where you have the commercial activity and then also sort of those restrictions that we're looking at.
But it sounds like, what Mr. Palmer was saying, the, the area considered Jacksonville extends all the way down to the reservoir and out and around.
Informally, informally, but not, this is the official county boundary of the Jacksonville community.
Was there any discussion, and I, I guess I'm just asking this more generically because I know the planning is going to be doing more of these small area plans. I know this is in a rural part of the county, but is there any discussion of where any new development would occur? Any new housing or is it just stasis?
So preservation is the main aim in D three in the rural area outside of the Erdle. Our department, that sort of development, we're looking to focus within the Erdle. And you were asking about the small area plans and sort of.
I am just curious, as we start to hear from more small area plans, will, now, does the staff, will there be any discussions? As you, people know, this is one of my bugaboos, we never talk about where growth can occur.
Right.
And if it's always, well, it can occur someplace else, it can't occur here. I'm curious, when do we start talking to people about what can occur?
Well, you're, you're right. And that is what the small area plan is about. But for example, now, when I started on this project, my point of focus was I was the planner for the rural area, D three. I'm currently the District One Planner and definitely we're looking at a lot more development in that area, in more potential development and more infill. But this is still a rural area and the main aim is preservation.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? And I'm, Mr. Palmer, I don't know if you or any of the rest of the board want to have any additional comments?
Well, the fact that it's summarized generally, that the plan in a sense maintains the long desired feelings of the people in the Greater Jacksonville area to maintain what we have right now in terms of any future development, to the degree that there can be development. It's usually RC five, RC four. We don't anticipate very much development. And where we've had development in the past, and I've been an officer or the board member for thirty-some years, when there was larger development, we worked very closely with them and with the county councilmen who existed at the time. So we want to really maintain it as a separate village, the commercial area and rural residential. We don't want increase in population if we can possibly keep it that way. And the mere fact that it's north of the Erdle, you need to have like one and a half acres for RC five and what, I think, three acres for RC four. You would know better than me, but, so we, we discourage development. That's okay.
Thank you.
No question. Yes, sir. Inside the plan, you said you wanted to build a new senior center. Because the senior center that you have there now is very busy. I know that because before my brother passed away, he lived on Merton Mill Road. Yes, sir. So he would always want me to take him there. Where would that new senior center be built?
There has been a meeting by, I think it was Department of Planning that we, where they actually have the drawings for the new senior center. It's on the same property. It's just south of it. If you know where the main building is.
Yes.
Goes, it goes north and south. This one will go east and west and it's just south of that building. The plans are handled by the Department of Planning or whoever. They had a community meeting on that. The proposed developers came and showed their plans and architects and whatnot. And there was an active discussion about it. And you're right, it's been growing that, the senior center has been growing immensely in that area.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from board members? If there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't go anywhere. Good evening again. The public meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now reconvened and called to order. I'm Scott Halupka, Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board. We will start with a roll call to account for members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Aray.
Aye.
Mr. Brady.
Aye.
Ms. Profi.
Aye.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Munizas.
Aye.
Mr. Schulman.
Aye.
Mr. Tennant.
Aye.
This evening, we've had the opportunity to discuss, and what I have, we've had the opportunity to discuss and will now have an opportunity to vote on the Jacksonville Community Plan. Staff are here to answer any further questions that we may have before we vote. Does anyone have any questions they thought of in the last two minutes? If there are no further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves the Jacksonville Community Plan and recommends the plan be forwarded on to county council for review and adoption as an amendment to Master Plan twenty thirty.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, I will now do a roll call. When I call your name, please say yes or no. Mr. Aray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Profi.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Munizas.
Yes.
Mr. Schulman. Mr. Tennant. Motion carries. This is the conclusion of our agenda. We will adjourn this meeting. We finished the, I believe, the CIP, so we don't need to reconvene for that. So our next board meeting is March sixth. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Now you can leave.
Thank you.